It's not Halloween.
I wore my mask until I sat down right here.
I've got mine in my pocket.
Everybody starts coughing uncontrollably then we'll... All right, countdown.
So I just could have pushed the record button, that's it?
Yes.
When's the last time Andre Assley was in our meeting?
He is, he will be dialing in via Zoom.
Does it record?
All right.
Nope. Reading. There we go.
All right, we are, we are live, so welcome everybody. It is Tuesday, April 14th. This is the regularly scheduled Warren Town Council meeting. We will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then I'll go through a few notes for the meeting.
As like a witness to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the difficult, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so normally we start with public comment. There was a deadline this evening of 5:00 PM for...
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. There was a deadline for submitting questions or statements for public comment of 5:00 PM and we received none. So I will kind of cover a few little meeting notes and expectations similar to what I did for the last budget meeting, just so we're all on the same page here. I will ask that everybody...
You are unmuted.
Thank you. Everybody be patient with it. It's really important that we all identify ourselves before speaking and that with all votes, we will go to a roll call system. So once a motion or a nomination is on the floor, I will start on my left, call the councilperson's name, they will vote, continue on until we get to my right. If there are any glitches with video or any of the technology, we'll have to take a pause. We may hear Manager Michaud, who is behind us in the hallway and managing the Zoom aspect and the technology. So she may need to raise her voice and let us know if there's any technical issues. So we... Okay. Live now? And so, so any portion of what we did before just now was not going to the Town Council YouTube livestream? Okay, so I can continue with the, with my notes. So...
Excuse me, I need to interject. We're having problems hearing back here. Is there any way that we could get a mic on the... Hold on just one second, sorry. The YouTube was interrupted. Perhaps, did you just say that? I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Yes. Nope, there, okay, got it, thank you.
All righty, so we are... Yeah, so are we back streaming? And synced up? I'm waiting for the... I will say something, yes, absolutely. We're good? All right, so we're back. We're back live and streaming. Kate, are you good?
I'll sit.
All righty, so if I forgot to say at the very beginning, this is a new process for us and so everybody's patience is appreciated. And if and when there are technology or video glitches, we do have to pause so they can be addressed. We can hear you, Tony. And that's what just happened, so I will get us back on track. The first, the first segment of our agenda is proclamation, or I should say...
I'm sorry to, I apologize, I do. Can you hit unmute on your phone out there, please?
That is done.
Fixed, thank you.
All righty, so thanks, everybody, for your patience. As per the directive from the Governor, we are only addressing, or our agenda this evening is condensed to critical issues and items. And we hope to get through everything and be done as efficiently as possible. We'll start with the proclamation. First is for Arbor Day, which is April 26th, 2020. This happens every year and we have a lovely certificate here that I will sign. I think we have done this every year, so there's no need to go through all of the where IAs and the where fours. But be it known that we hereby proclaim April, April 24th, 26th as Arbor Day in the Town of Warren and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Julie, it does say April 24th on the certificate and April 26th on the agenda. I'm not sure what the official date is. And the next is the proclamation for Earth Day. And Earth Day is officially April 22nd. Every year, we've had an Earth Day celebration and cleanup that's put on by the Conservation Commission. And this year, it won't happen as an official event and gathering, as we've always done. But we do encourage everybody to maybe make an extra effort that day of April 18th to clean up around your neighborhoods and your communities and your, and any place you might be in the town. The members of the Conservation Commission appreciate everybody's attention to being more mindful about their surroundings and our environment all the time. It's sad to see the amount of litter accumulating in certain areas of our community. Certain items like little nip bottles are a particular issue. So I would just ask that people, please, if you are, whatever your preferred beverage is, dispose of it appropriately. That said, our Conservation Commission asks that if you take photographs of yourselves cleaning up on the April 18th day, you send them in to the Conservation Commission, to Dr. David Weed. His information is available on the town website. Next, we will go to the resolution, the Town of Warren Resolution for the 2020 Census. The, this is, the census will be taking place soon and I think we all understand, or should by now, and if we don't, that participation in the census, the counting of every person is what gives us, our numbers directly correlate to the amount of funding and representation that we have. So with this resolution, the end of it says, "Thou therefore be it resolved that the Warren Town Council recognizes the critical importance of a complete and accurate census count in 2020 and actively encourages all residents to participate in the 2020 Census, beginning on March 12th, 2020, and to become involved in peer education and outreach by the Census. Be it further resolved that every council member will promote participation in Census by signing up for the pledge tool, by texting pledge to 401-205-3434, that every council member will consider other ways to promote census participation, including integrating messages into regular constituent communications, and that every council member will help increase the count in their respective wards using resources and materials developed by the Rhode Island Complete Count Committee and Census Promotion Efforts." All in favor, and I will start to my left, Councilman De Pasquale. Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Council President Cronin?
Aye.
Council Vice President Hanley?
Aye.
Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have appointments. So this first one is the appointment to the Bristol County Water Authority position. It's a three-year term and it's a reappointment, basically, of the current member, John Genetto. He has expressed that, yes, in fact, he is interested in continuing to serve. Do we have...
And I'll second that.
Aye.
Councilman De Pasquale votes aye. Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Council President Cronin?
Aye.
Council Vice President Hanley?
Aye.
Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Okay. Next, so we have the interviews. We have for the, for the position that is the existing or the expiring year or the remainder of the term that was, that exists from the former seat holder, Mr. Palmieri. We have interviewed two of the applicants at the previous meeting. We interviewed Chris Stanley and we interviewed Brian Mellor. This evening, we will hear from the other two applicants, James Carter and Barry Lyle. What we will ask is that we hear from the two applicants, that they, they will have a few minutes or two to express to us why they are the, why they feel they are the best applicants for this, for this position. Then we will have time for each council member to ask any questions they might have. Once we've finished with the interviews, then we will entertain nominations. If the solicitor would like to just refresh our memory on the voting process for this type of position.
Thank you, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Ms. Anthony, it's just a town solicitor. Under the Town Charter and the Rhode Island General Laws, and that includes Public Law 2013- Chapter 015, there's no process for the nominations for the Bristol County Water Authority. It just says that the council appoints. That being the case, the relevant Roberts Rule is Article 11 Rule 66. And that is, a nomination is made, doesn't have to be seconded, and then the Chair will ask, the President will ask, if there are any other nominations. If there are, the vote proceeds with the first one nominated. Prove whoever else is nominated until the first one achieves a majority vote. Then the voting ends. That's the process under Roberts Rules.
Thank you. So, Ms. Cuello, do you have on the line? Okay. Okay, all righty. So are you going to call first James Carter? Okay.
Hi, Mr. Carter, this is the municipal councillor, everyone, how are you today? I'm well. I'm going to put you on to speak with the council. I want this to talk to you for six seconds. Can you and you will be together, okay? All right, hold on a minute, please.
Jim, can you hear us? Jim, can you hear us? Jim, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, great.
All righty, so, Mr. Carter, thank you for calling in. If you would like to take a minute to speak to us about why you would be the best applicant for this position, and then we will turn it over to the council to ask any questions. Once we have completed our interview, then we will go to the next applicant and after that, we will have nominations and a vote. So the floor is yours.
Okay.
So we're waiting for, so sorry, we're waiting for you to give us a little talk about yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
Hello?
Hey, Jim.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, yeah, I can hear you.
All right.
The reason why I put my name in as an applicant is because I did 32 years as a plumber in the field and I thought that maybe I could, I could give some professional expertise from the trade man side of the, um, point of view to the water authority. And because I understand water distribution and, and other like. So that's basically the lead, the only reason why and I thought they could be able to help the town council to, um, direct, you know, how we, how the water authority is going to go over the next few years.
Very good, thank you. Councilman De Pasquale, do you have any questions for Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Jim. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Would you consider yourself familiar with the infrastructure and workings of the Water Authority?
Could you say that again?
Do you consider yourself familiar with the infrastructure and the workings of the Water Authority?
Yeah, I'm having trouble hearing you, because you must be echoing in the, in the room.
How about now?
Just about, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Maybe if the speaker goes over to him? Carry the speaker to him.
Okay, you know what, that's a good idea. Jim, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman De Pasquale has asked, do you, would you consider yourself familiar with the inner workings and the infrastructure at the Water Authority?
Yes.
Do you understand the policies and procedure and how the Water Authority is governed?
Do you want, okay, you heard that?
All right, I have no further questions.
Okay, Councilman Hecker? Any questions?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Carter, this is Brandt Hecker, how are you?
How are you?
Good. So your career has been in master plumbing, as I see, correct?
Yes.
32 years?
Industrially, I mean, commercial industrially, residential.
Okay. I noticed some engineering in your background. Well, can you explain that a little bit, please? You are, you are, you are I, apparently, for engineering?
That's true.
Can you elaborate on that at all, or? What kind of engineering it was?
Uh, civil engineering.
Okay. Good enough. Just, I just wondered what type of engineering was. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hanley?
Hi, Jim, this is John Hanley.
Hi, John.
You wouldn't have any, would you be able to have the time to put into this? Would that be a problem for you, or would you be available for the meetings when they're...
No, I'd be available, I can make myself available. I'm self-employed, I have a couple guys working for me, so I can, I can make the, that's not an issue.
All right, great.
Councilman Kalenda? Thank you very much, Mr. Carter, for your application and your willingness to call in this evening and be interviewed. If there are no further questions, we will call the next applicant.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
To the benefit of being at the end of the line.
Yeah, the questions are all done. We're gonna stop down here, Barry.
No questions. I'm trying to fill the free commission spot. How many people sit on the free commission?
Hi, guys, students, well, how are you? I'm going to put the live speaker and we'll be speaking with the council. Can you help on that, please? He is zooming, which means he's, he's on video. He can hear us, you can see us, but he's not here. Oh, I have to keep playing again.
Mr. Lyle, can you hear us?
I can, there's a nickel there, but I can hear you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you, all righty, so, welcome. Thank you for accepting our call and your application. We have already interviewed the other applicant who had not been previously interviewed, Mr. Carter. And what we will ask you is just to give us a brief statement of why you believe you're the best applicant for this position. We've all reviewed the applications and the information. We all did receive your photographs, or the photograph you sent and, and have reviewed your application here. So you have a minute or two to just give us a statement as to why you would be the best applicant. And then we will go around the council and let the members ask you any questions they may have. Once that's completed, then we will finish our, end our conversation with you and have nominations and a vote. So you are, the floor is yours.
I am what?
The floor is yours. Please let us know why you would be the best applicant for this position.
Okay, your voice is, I'm, I'm, I'm working at it and I understand what you're saying and with difficulty, just so that you know. I was not expecting to be able to give a statement. But I have something in front of me. And what it is, it's the fact that you, the Town Council, and the Water Authority, together, have made decisions that are going to spend $11 million.
Mr. Lyle, excuse...
And it's a very conservative one.
Excuse me.
In the next two years, $11 million on a kicking unit. And everything that I see is that, as a return on that investment, you get nothing. Nothing.
Mr. Lyle, excuse me.
I find that more than unacceptable.
Okay, that is...
It's as simple as that.
Okay. I duly noted, the question was, why are you most qualified over the others to hold this position? If you don't have a statement...
I just gave you some information that I don't think that you've thought about. And if you have, well then, fine, but I find it unacceptable and I'm offering that to you as the fact that I have a keen eye on what's going on over here.
Okay, I'm going to...
And, and that amount of money, to me, can't be ignored. $11 million, and that's a conservative estimate on what you're going to be spending on a kicking unit. And it has nothing to do with fresh water, quite the contrary.
Okay, I am going to...
And the reason that I'm interested, the reason that I'm interested in being on that board is because what I'm going to do is provide for you information and, and eyes to things that I don't think anybody else has.
Okay.
And I've taken the time to look at absolutely everything about what's going on. And I'm talking about the Water Authority's infrastructure, what they own, how they maintain it. And I think that that sets me apart from the other people. It's as simple as that.
Thank you.
That's pretty much my statement. I just gave, I just gave you one, one example. $11 million on a reservoir that just, you're just going to let go right out of the tide.
All righty, thank you.
And I, and I see, I see the opportunity here to do something entirely different and to not lose this resource. That's not particularly the reason why I'm stating it to you now. The reason that I'm stating it to you is because I've never heard that figure and I've never heard an analysis on the part of anybody about what's being done grosso modo, in other words, as a whole.
Okay, Mr. Lyle, Mr. Lyle, hello. Excuse me.
And what I think that you ought to do is to consider the fact that my eye, my perception of things is different than other people. And I'm considering this whole end of town as a natural resource that you people don't consider.
Okay, Mr. Lyle, Mr. Lyle, can you, excuse me, Mr. Lyle, can you hear me? Do you hear me speaking?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your statement. And I'm going to go to my left and ask Councilman De Pasquale if he has a question for you.
Mr. Lyle, I appreciate your input. Mr. Lyle, I appreciate your input, but I don't want you to give the people the impression that this is the first time I, or, I will always speak for myself, not the council. This is not the first time that I have heard about the restructuring of the reservoir, the removal of the dam, as well as the improvements to the infrastructure, which is supported by Save the Bay, comes with a high recommendation to bring the Kickis back to the river it once was, which will be greatly reduced. That is understood. And I also unfortunately agree with the report and information that has been given to us over the years that the reservoir is no longer a viable reservoir for drinking water due to its depth and location. And I appreciate your input, but I just wanted to make sure, because you made the statement that you were bringing new information to this council, I want you to know that I completely disagree with what you've said tonight in regards to it being new. But I appreciate your involvement, and thank you.
And I don't know who is speaking. I didn't catch it.
Joseph De Pasquale.
And, okay, so, thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry. Who was that who was just speaking?
That was Councilman De Pasquale. Next, we're going to, I'm going to ask-
Oh, that was Joseph.
That was Joseph. Next, I'm going to ask Councilman Hecker if he has a question.
I have no questions.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Hanley, do you have a question?
Uh, I have one question. Good evening, Mr. Lyle.
Miss, Miss, I have a question for you. Are you, are you, might I offer you the opportunity to respond afterwards?
Um, I think we've heard your statement. Is there, we're asking-
You asked me for a statement, but now I'm getting people who are saying things to me, and I don't have a chance to respond to that. Why not?
Okay, we're still in the question and answer phase, so Councilman Hanley has a question for you right now. At the end, then we will proceed to making nominations and have a vote.
Well, I have a little bit of a response. You've been a city basketballer, if that's possible.
Um, a brief statement you may make.
Sure. Joseph, you and I were on top of the dike on January 14, 2018, and you were with the Sun Dominic. And everything that was going on over there, I talked to you about. You didn't understand any of it, and at that point, I didn't either. Now I know what happened, how it happened, why it happened. All you said that day, and this is over two years ago, again, January 14, 2018-
Mr. Lyle, I'm going to interrupt you. Mr. Lyle.
You said twice to me-
Could you please mute him?
This is a done deal, Barry. It's a done deal. I need for the council.
Okay.
Mr. Lyle, we're taking off the speaker.
Okay. Mr. Lyle, this is an opportunity for us to ask you questions and for you to answer them. This is not a time to go through the history of your interaction with various council members and your knowledge of how things were. Mr. Hanley will ask you a question. Mr. Kalenda will have the opportunity to ask you a question. Once that is, once we're finished, we will take nominations and make a vote. This is not the time to have a back and forth about your personal history with one of the council members.
Well, that's what I just did. I had to do this, well, obviously, I had to do this.
Okay.
All right, then I'll just leave my microphone.
Yeah, the people can't hear his answer.
Oh.
Put your phone in the microphone.
All right, well, then the public can't hear.
The public can't hear, we do that.
The next one, John, the next one do that before. It's not, I can't figure out how to turn it on. No button.
Mr. Lyle, could you speak again, please?
Sure. Boy, you're coming in loud and clear now.
It's the, the bottom where your left hand is there.
Two, three.
Beautiful. Mr. Hanley.
Okay. What, what you, what you just said is what I just did. Joseph said something, I responded.
Excuse me, now Mr. Hanley's going to ask you a question.
Sure.
Mr. Lyle, if appointed, would you have the time to serve on the authority?
Oh, not only that, for God's sake. As far as I know, that their meeting is held where I used to go to third grade in Child Street School. All I'd have to do is walk back up to school like I did years ago. The answer's yes.
Thank you.
And Councilman Kalenda, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Lyle, I will say to you, as I will say to all of the applicants, we appreciate your interest in serving on this board. Whomever is appointed, um-
I have another question for you, and I, if I understand it, no other council member has a speech to speak.
Um, we are finished with our questions. I was merely-
I speak.
Yep.
And I'd like to know, I'd like to know about the photo that I sent to you.
We all received it.
You all received it, okay?
Yep.
I actually used that as a litmus test. Well, I thought that I also wanted to show you something. He gave you a little, as to the side, if you don't see about the Water Authority, some things that I reported.
Mr. Lyle, this is, this is not part of the interview process. We appreciate your, your photos. We appreciate your historical knowledge of, of the Kickin' Mewit. We are going to have discussion now, deliberate, make nominations, and move forward. What I was about to say is, any of the applicants, or the three applicants who are not appointed this evening, are welcome to participate and go to the BCWA meetings. They are public meetings. You will not be able to vote, but you are able to go and participate and listen, and, uh-
I see, I see, so you're not going to allow the public to know the photo that I sent you.
We have, this, given the, no, the, the, we could, no, we, we do not have a video capability this evening.
I assume that, but at least the fact that, that everybody knows what the photo is about and that it's going to be included in meeting minutes.
Yes, it is.
Mister, this is the one that I'm listening to.
No, it's not. If it's, if it's not part of your resume, why would it be included in the minutes, Mr. Lyle?
It, it was included with your resume. The entire council has been able to see it. That is, we have met our obligation.
Not, not irrelevant.
It's not, yes.
And it's not relevant to this interview process.
But the matter, that issue is not, it was the BCWA, rather, it's whether or not candidates are qualified to be appointed to the BCWA.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you, Mr. De Sisco.
I, I don't know who is speaking. I'm sorry. I didn't catch that.
Okay, the solicitor.
That was the town, that was the town solicitor speaking, Mr. Lyle. Say again? The town solicitor. Oh, hi, Mr. De Sisco. How are you? I'm fine, thanks. I looked like that, uh, that photo was part of my application. I wanted to make sure that it's included in meeting minutes with the night.
The entire council-
Are you still in?
Yes, we are all still here. The entire council received the file with the photo. Your application is part of the meeting minutes. This discussion will be part of the meeting minutes. Thank you.
Great, and the photo was part of my application?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
All righty. So, we have-
Motion to nominate James Carter.
All righty. So we have a mo, we have a nomination for James Carter. Do we have any other nominations?
Make a motion to nominate Chris Stanley.
Do we have any other nominations? All righty. So, we have two nominations. The first is James Carter, nominated by Councilman De Pasquale. All in favor of James Carter, Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, no. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
We have a second nomination, and that is Chris Stanley. Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Council President Cronin, aye. Council Vice President Hanley?
Aye.
Chris Stanley has three votes. James Carter has two votes. Chris Stanley has been appointed to the Bristol County Water Authority. Thank you.
Can I ask this solicitor a question?
You may.
Tony, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, so under Article 11 that we just did.
Excuse me, this is Councilman Kalenda speaking?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, I, I thought he would recognize me. Would it been necessary to have every member vote for each candidate, or once the candidate got the necessary votes, the matting's over?
Uh, if, if you want, you can move to make the appointment unanimous.
I was just curious, for future reference. Article 11, I'm not that familiar with. I'm glad you brought it to our attention. I was just curious that if it was a matter of formality, or, you know, once you get the necessary votes, is it necessary to go beyond it? So it, it really is-
It's not, yeah, once-
When, when, when the, when a majority of the votes is achieved, that's when the appointment takes place.
Okay, yeah, fair enough.
All righty. We now have one position on the Economic Development Board open. At our last meeting, we interviewed applicant Kyle Sampson. This evening, I, we intend to interview Zachary Weinberger and Valerie, Valerie Marzoff. We are getting them on the phone. Councilman Hecker, did you have a question?
We did appoint Chris Sampson.
We did not.
Yes, we did, according to the minutes.
The minutes will be addressed when we get to the acceptance of minutes.
Okay, so-
Yeah, so the minutes-
I was surprised when I read the minutes and I saw that he was appointed. I, I was questioning that.
Yeah.
So, that's incorrect. He did not appoint Mr. Sampson.
We did not. We agreed to postpone until this meeting.
So, one, one full position and two alternate available for this?
Correct. I, I, yes. The minutes also reflect that we created two alternate positions. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Weinberger. This is you, the town president, you want to help me out?
I'm busy.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to put the live speaker, and then if we're able to speak to the council, that we have, um, if we're able to get that. Very good.
Can you hear, hear us, Mr. Weinberger?
Um, very far away, I guess.
Okay, is it any, let me just turn that up. Is that any better?
Take the speaker, put it near the microphone.
Right, yes. Whoever's speaking would be closer to the microphone. That would be great.
All right, is this better?
That's a little bit better, thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Weinberger, we have previously interviewed one applicant, Kyle Sampson. We will speak to you, and I'll ask you to give a statement as to why you feel you're the best applicant for this position. Then we will go around the room and allow each of the council members to ask questions. Then we will call the second, the third applicant. We encourage you all, or we are, we will be appointing the full-time position this evening, and then whoever doesn't take the, get the full-time position, there will be two alternate positions. So you can consider yourself part of the Economic Development Board already. So, um-
Thank you.
If you would like to give us just a, a brief statement as to why, what you would bring to the board.
Sure. So I am a business and property owner in Warren, and I have a good background in business. I have also advanced training, MBA in finance and a law degree, and I am very interested in the economic viability of the town because out of self-interest, as well as public interest, it has an impact on my business. So at least that I can bring my many years of experience and my background in training to helping economic development, maybe do good things for the town, and, I think, you have to say this right now.
Great. That's perfect. That's just what we were looking for. I will ask Councilman De Pasquale. Do you have any questions? No? Councilman Hecker?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Weinberger. Can you hear me?
Um, not very well, but go ahead. Let's try. This is imperfect medium. We do the best we can, right?
This, this is Brand Hecker. How are you this evening?
You know what? Why don't you, I, tell me the question, and I will ask him.
Uh, my, my question to Mr. Weinberger is, what does he see as a couple of things that the Economic Development Board needs to pursue at this point? Obviously, taking in consideration, we're in the middle of a crisis, but that being said, coming out of this, what, what would he see that a couple of important points?
Did you hear that, Mr. Weinberger?
I did not. I heard some of the words, but I really didn't understand the question.
Okay, I will, I'll let you know. So, Mr. Hecker asks, once we get past the pandemic, what do you think of, or could you please talk about one or two issue, critical issues, that you think we should pursue in regard to economic development? What do you think we should be working on and focusing on?
So, a couple of things that I think we can, sorry, that we can work on. I think it's important that we prioritize, continue to build or increase the vitality of Main Street. I know that there's been a little bit of turnover and there's side streets and water streets and so on. But looking for opportunities to encourage businesses and activity. And I think another thing that would really help economic development is to increase the number of people that actually live in the center of town. I know that in my building, we have some residential units and we do have people living in all of them, but I also know that there are a lot of residential-
Excuse me, can I just-
-potential residents that are close to the center of town-
Excuse me, can you hear me?
-that are not being occupied. So, an increase in that occupancy would be helpful to the businesses in the center of town.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Weinberger. Is, are, can the public not hear? Is that what I'm hearing?
You hear everything.
You hear everything? So what was, so that was good?
Yeah, plug into the microphone. We can speak.
For us, okay.
Mr. Hecker did not talk in the microphone.
Okay.
I told you.
So, uh, Mr. Hanley, do you have a question for Mr. Weinberger?
Yes, Mr. Weinberger, how are you tonight?
Very good, thank you. How are you today?
Not bad at all. Obviously, with a question I ask all the applicants, because a lot of times these things take time that people don't realize. Would you have time, the time required to put into this position if appointed?
Absolutely. One of the things that I found over the course of my career, and I have participated on other public boards, and I do sit on a couple of non-public boards as well, is that the amount of time that is required is, put it this way, people are scared of the amount of time. And what I've found is that you put in quality time, and you can get a good job done, and, and it actually is not as much time as you think it could be. And at the same time, you know, we spend time, I think that the time that's put in is very well-invested, both in terms of improving the community and the community to public service, and maybe the needs of the wrong community. So I have no concerns at all about not having the time or being able to put in the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kalenda, do you have a question for Mr. Weinberger?
No questions at this time.
All righty, thank you. So, Mr. Weinberger, thank you for calling in, and we are going to go on to the final applicant and then have our vote. Either way, as I said, you can consider yourself a member, either as an alternate or in the full position.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your taking the effort, and thank you for some good questions. And I propose serving on the community, one capacity or another, and of course, I will do my utmost, no matter what.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Can I reiterate, Mr. Hecker?
There are three applicants. There's one full-time, or one, yeah, one, one position open and two alternate positions. Yeah.
Are the alternates advertised?
At the last meeting, we decided to expand the size of the board to, from seven to nine, I believe.
Yes.
To accommodate the excellent caliber of applicants that we had.
Were they advertised for?
Do you also have a position for creative for the extra two people that applied that Mr. Rui wanted on?
I guess I'm just pointing out that it's not on the agenda.
It wasn't, they were advertised. They were on last month's agenda to be here. They couldn't make their interview.
If I were looking at the agenda, and I may be wrong, but it says Economic Development Board, one position tonight. I'm hearing that there's three positions being advertised. I only see one position, because I don't see two positions for the alternate position. If somebody was interested in serving as an alternate, they wouldn't know. Just find it odd that it's not on the agenda.
This was completely continued from last month. They made an alternate for the entire section to.
All right, so then it's clear that the agenda is an error.
As far as the explanation or the additional in parenthetical statement that there are two alternate positions.
And we're advertising for them and there's vacancies for them, yes, it's not on the agenda.
At last month's meeting.
Irrelevant.
We created that and we did advertise.
It's not advertised on this agenda.
We also have to advertise for the, the alternates. We also make, create two positions so these two people that haven't been interviewed, who couldn't attend the meetings, could then be appointed to the board. We can plan and we can develop.
We cannot make, we cannot make appointments for specific people. We advertise positions that people apply for. This is an error.
You were part of the discussion?
Correct.
And you voted for it?
Right, and it's not on the agenda.
So here.
We increased the, make additional part-time. It's not on the agenda.
Are you suggesting that we should again postpone the appointments?
I'm suggesting that Mr. De Sisto should look at the agenda as posted and there is no advertisement for alternates. Therefore, we can't appoint alternates if it wasn't properly posted.
I actually, I actually don't agree with that statement.
Of course.
If it was advertised, and if it's part of the minutes, and I'm looking at the minutes, if there's a typographical error on the agenda, that doesn't impair the council's ability to make the appointment of these alternates.
Mr. De Sisto, it's not a typographical error. The appoint, the positions are not there. There is no language on the agenda that says alternate positions.
Is it, is it a flaw of the agenda? Is it a typographical error?
It's not on the agenda. The.
Is it a typographical error?
No.
That's the question.
No.
I'm looking at the minutes on page two. Motion by Vice President Hanley, seconded by Councilman Kalenda. The council creates two alternate positions for the Economic Development Board. The motion is unanimous.
Correct.
Okay. Were, were, were those positions advertised?
No, no.
My, that, my question is, when I say advertise, I'm not talking about the agenda. I'm talking about, was there an advertisement for the alternate position?
No, no.
That was not, 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 I didn't want to continue there. To introduce the other two people who applied. And that's when they, when they created the position, because these two people had applied and they were all assets, to be assets to the board, according to their plan.
It wasn't advertised.
Was the language on the agenda a carryover from last month?
Yeah.
Okay. I still don't see, I don't, do not see a legal problem with making the appointments for the alternates, notwithstanding the language on the agenda. And if there is a, if there is an objection to that, that can be changed on the agenda by a vote by the council under forty-six dash six dash five.
I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda. The Economic Development Board save one position and two alternates.
I'll second that.
Councilman De Pasquale. We're taking a, a vote.
Can we discuss for a moment?
We can discuss. Councilman Hecker?
I understand Councilman De Pasquale's problem with this, that the positions, the alternate positions really should have been advertised. We have three good candidates. We can appoint one tonight, which will fill that board. And I, I don't see a problem with.
But if the solicitor's advising us that we can amend it.
I understand, but we could, we could, we could go back out and advertise again for next month and probably have these same two candidates.
Sure.
And be able to appoint them. It's not going to impair the Economic Development Board at this time, especially under the circumstances where they're not even meeting. So, you know, we, we could actually do that. That would be my suggestion.
Councilman Kalenda, did you have additional comment?
You know, the solicitor's weighed in. If we have the ability to, under, what did he say, forty-six, six, five, you know, under the Rhode Island general laws, to amend it. I mean, I'm reading the minutes. I remember the spirit was to continue it. The minutes really don't indicate that it was going to be continued. It's just that we created extra positions. However, if we have the opportunity to amend this and it's really like there's no harm, no foul, then let's just do it and move forward. I appreciate, you know, Brand saying, nobody's meeting, but nobody else is coming either forward on the EDC.
Correct. Councilman Hanley?
Yes, one of, one of the way we could go would be to make them all three positions. Because we advertised for a position. Doesn't matter, the number doesn't matter. We didn't advertise for one position. We advertised for a person or people to serve on the economic board. We make them all full-time positions and no alternates. They all applied for what was advertised.
The only issue there is with quorum.
Becomes five.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And as with all of our boards and commissions, the meetings are public. So I am not, I understand Councilman De Pasquale's issue with the appearance that there was, that of unfairness to somebody else who might have wanted to apply. This position has been open now, I believe, for two cycles. We have three excellent applicants here. If somebody else feels that they want to participate and contribute in any way, they are welcome to go to the meetings and participate and contribute. They just won't be able to vote. But there is plenty of work to be done and, and opportunity to serve the community, especially on the EDB. So we do have a motion on the floor to amend the agenda as it is right now, to, to add two alternate positions. Any further discussion?
Yes, I, I'm not necessarily making my position known due to fairness. I'm making my position known due to accuracy and regard to the literal interpretation of the agenda. And even though we created two positions, there was an error, we didn't advertise for them. Even though there's an eraser in regards to making an amendment and this and that and everything else, that's all well and good. I just feel that if we're going to advertise, we should, and we didn't. Therefore, one position is available. That's how I feel. It's not about fairness, it's about our job and transparency. You look at the agenda, you should be able to understand what is being discussed at the meeting. This clearly states one position, full-time, no mention at all of alternate positions. That's all.
Noted. We do have a motion on the floor. Councilman De Pasquale.
Nay.
Councilman Hecker?
Nay.
Council President? Aye. Council Vice President?
Aye.
Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
All righty. So we have added, the motion passes to add two alternates. We can proceed with the interview of the third application, Valerie Marzoff. Ms. Coelho? That's fine. That's, okay. Does that timeout?
Hello?
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 Hi, Ms. Marzoff?
Yes, how are you?
I'm well. It's Carrie Cronin. So, I will just give you, explain to you how we have been handling this interview process this evening. We have already spoken to the, to one applicant this evening who had not been interviewed at the previous meeting. You will have an opportunity in a moment to give a brief statement as to why you believe you are the best applicant for this position and what you would bring to it. And then we will open up questions to the council and give you an opportunity to answer. Once we are finished, we will hang up with you and then take nominations and a vote for the one full-time position. As it happens, there are, we, there are two alternate positions that were created at the last council meeting. Unfortunately, there was an error on the, the agenda and it does, they are not posted. But all three applicants this evening will be members of the Economic Development Board, one as a full-time position and two as alternates. So, if you would.
I've been listening, so I'm, I'm, I'm watching online as well.
All righty, great. Then please, take a moment and let us know what you would bring to the board.
Great. So I'm hoping to add, just my experience as an attorney, to help develop and oversee a program that works to be fair across all businesses, but also has the flexibility as necessary to attract new development. I don't have any particular business or industry ties. I think I see my involvement as law all the way for me to help the town and ensure that the town is sort of getting the best end of the deal of any bargain that they're offering and through the Economic Development Board and attracting new business and small businesses to the community. And I just want to make sure that that process is a fair process. Any incentives from the town that are offered, that are distributed and negotiated and the compliance and enforcement of any agreement are done in a way that benefits the town. I moved here a couple of years ago. I have a child that's going to be, you know, going through school here. And I just want to make sure that the future, a secure future for Warren. And that's what I hope to bring by joining the board.
Thank you very much. Councilman De Pasquale, do you have any questions for Ms. Marzoff?
Ms. Marzoff, thank you for applying. I'm looking at your resume and you are solid in regards to law. So hopefully that will be an asset to the board. Thank you.
Could you, you could hear Mr. De Pasquale's statement?
Yes.
Okay, great. We've had some audio issues. Councilman Hecker?
Oh, good evening, Ms. Marzoff. This is Brand Hecker.
Good evening.
My question is, what brought you to Warren and, and what do you, how long do you see yourself staying here and?
Sure. I was, I was going to law school in Bristol, at Roger Williams. I was hanging out in the town. I really loved the area. My husband also, he actually used to live in Bristol and used to bike through Warren and actually found, we're down in the Tuiliss neighborhood, found this little area that we just fell in love with. And we had a chance to move down here and we did. And it's been a great experience. I really love being down here. The community is great. And I've heard a lot of positive things from other people who are involved in town government, who live right down the street from me. And so we, I love talking about it. And now that my son is a little bit older, I have the time now to get more involved, which is something that I've always wanted to do. And that's what I'm looking to do. And I saw that this was a position that was available. I think it sort of matches up with what I can do from, especially like was just said from my legal background. I think it would be a, an asset that's slightly different from having, you know, someone who just wants to prop up their business. I think it, it's more of a, of a level that coming at it from, what is beneficial for the town, not for what's beneficial for one particular sector of the, of the economy.
Thank you. Councilman Hanley?
Yes, Ms. Marzoff, Marzoff. Would you, you do look like you've got a very full schedule. I always ask the applicants, because a lot of them eventually find out that they do not have the time to put in. Do you have the time available, available to put into this board? I believe they meet.
I do. I do, and I've actually, I've thought about that, especially with having a young son and a family. I wanted to make sure before I made any decisions that I had the time available. And I think it's a really important investment to improve a community to do this. And so I'm willing, able and ready to get involved.
Thank you.
Councilman Kalenda?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie, for your application and wanted to serve on the EDC.
EDB.
EDB. I like EDC.
Yeah. So, yes, thank you very much for your application. We're going to end this phone call and have discussion and nominations. As I stated before, whether you are appointed as the full-time member or as an alternate, we thank you for participation and look forward to your contribution.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome. All righty, so we have three excellent applicants, Kyle Sampson, Zachary Weinberger, and Valerie Marzoff. Do we have a, any nomination for the full-time position?
I'll nominate Zachary Weinberger.
I'll second.
All in favor? Councilman De Pasquale?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm confused.
Well, the Water Company Authority, I think, was different than this.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I believe the solicitor had explained that before. But Anthony, is that so for, for our boards and commissions? Do we do nomination, motions and seconds and, and a vote? Or do we take additional nominations?
Well, that's in a situation where you have one appointment and more than, more than one nomination for the appointment. And that's not the case here. Don't you have two, two spots up?
We have one position and two alternates. So whomever is, whomever gets the majority of the votes for the full-time position will have that position. But right now, we just have one nomination on the floor.
Is, is there more than one nomination for the, for the full position?
No, but a nomination from someone on the council.
We have.
What he's asking you is, are there more applicants than the regional council? Eight to ten percent?
No, no.
Well, the other two are alternate positions, yeah.
Anthony, what we have is, we have one nomination of the three applicants for the full-time position. Should we take nominations for another one? Or should we vote on the first one that was seconded?
Might as well vote on it.
All right, all right. So we have the motion on the floor and a second for Zachary Weinberger for the full-time position. Should he get the majority of the votes, he will be appointed to that full-time position. The other two applicants will then be alternates. If Mr. Weinberger does not receive the majority of the votes, we will take another nomination. So, starting to my left, Councilman De Pasquale, we have an aye. Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mr. Hanley?
Aye.
And Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So Mr. Weinberger has been appointed as the full-time member. Aye. Okay. So, Mr. Weinberger has been appointed as the full-time member of the Economic Development Board, Kyle Sampson and Valerie Marzov.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Kyle Sampson and Valerie Marzov as the two alternates.
Madam President, if I may, I just wanted to circle back and revisit what Councilman Hanley had recommended earlier of just making them all voting members. And you brought up the issue of quorum. I guess I have a question for the solicitor. Tony, if we choose to make those alternates full-voting members later on during our council term, that's possible, correct?
It's possible. You'd have to change the structure of the board.
And we still have the ability to do that?
Correct.
Okay. Alright. Thanks.
Alrighty.
That's it.
Thank you. So, Kyle Sampson, Valerie Marzov are alternates.
And I'll second that.
But I don't believe we need to vote on that, do we?
Well, I didn't...
Sure, yeah.
For him to be the full-time.
Okay, okay.
So, I think we should, to bunch it up, I think we should follow through with the motion and a second and then a vote.
Alrighty. So, we have a motion and a second, making Kyle Sampson and Valerie Marzov the two alternates on the Economic Development Board. Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
And Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
The motions pass unanimously. We do have a position for the tree commission, still outstanding. We can continue to advertise on the town website.
Put that in the motion.
You may.
Make a motion. We continue to advertise the tree commission position?
And I'll second that.
So, we have a motion by...
Just the webpage.
We have a motion and a second from Councilman Hanley and Councilman Kalenda to continue advertising for the position on the tree commission on the town website. Councilman De Pasquale? Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
And Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Alright. Next, we have the acceptance of minutes. If everybody has reviewed, we have the acceptance of March 3, 2020 minutes. That was our first budget workshop.
I was absent. I'll make a motion to approve the... Mr. Hanley, I was absent. It says I was in attendance. Oh, no, sorry. It says was not, doesn't it? Fine, thank you. No correction. I thought you were saying that because you didn't want to make the motion. I will make a motion. We approve the March 3, first budget workshop minutes.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Councilman Hanley, a second by Councilman Kalenda. Councilman De Pasquale?
I can't vote on it. I wasn't there.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
And Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Meeting minutes are accepted. Do we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes for March 9? That was the second budget workshop.
So moved. Second.
So, we have a motion by Councilman Hecker, a second by Hanley. Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Alrighty, accepted minutes. The March 10 minutes need to be amended to reflect that the appointment to the statement, motion by Vice President Hanley and seconded by Councilman Kalenda, appointing Mr. Sampson is incorrect. What we did, the minutes need to be amended to state that we voted unanimously to add two alternate positions and to defer the vote until the next meeting in April to interview the two additional applicants who were not aware of their obligation to appear.
Motion to approve those corrections.
Second.
All in favor. Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
And Kalenda?
Aye.
Right, those minutes, or the amendment has been voted upon, and next we need to accept those minutes.
Motion to accept March 10 minutes amended.
Second.
We have a motion by Hanley, seconded by Kalenda. Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
And Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
And finally, we have the acceptance of the March 31, 2020 minutes. That was the third budget workshop.
Motion to approve the March 31, 31, third budget workshop minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Hanley, second by Kalenda. Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
And Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Alrighty, the minutes have been accepted. Next, we have the consent agenda, P1, P2, and P3. These are all typical stuff. Does anybody have any questions?
Motion to approve consent agenda, P1, P2, and P3.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion by Councilman Hanley and a second by Councilman Kalenda. Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Consent agenda has been approved. Next, we have ordinance O1, Chapter 9, Article 3, Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling. This is the second reading, Section 9-51, definitions through Section 9-74, repeal of conflicting provisions. So, we discussed last month the edits, amendments in addition to this ordinance. Is there any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, Chapter 9, Article 3, for solid waste.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and seconded by, motion made by Councilman Hanley, seconded by Kalenda. Ms. Michaud, do you have anything you would like to add at this time?
No, nothing at this time.
Alrighty. I would just like to say that I think we should consider for a future agenda item and discussion the development of a price list for the solid waste items that will be picked up. I think we need to look at what other communities are doing and have our DPW director and manager work on a better price list. I don't think that's anything we need to do right now, but I think going forward, we should have that happen. So, the vote on the table is to approve this second reading. Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
And Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Okay. O2, Chapter 7, Article 11, Section 7-45, Adjustment of Exemption Revaluation Year, first reading. So, this states, "All taxpayers entitled to a personal tax exemption as set forth in Section 7-46 through 7-90 shall have the exemption adjusted in any year that the town has a real property revaluation to reflect the same monetary savings that appeared on the property tax bill for the year prior to the revaluation of the real property." Does Mr. Ledem, our tax assessor, would you like to talk about this?
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, so for the public, this is our tax assessor, Chris Ledem. He will explain what this really means.
So, basically, every time we go through a revaluation, we do go through this statute. But this, there is enabling legislation that saves us from making these adjustments to the ordinance and then making this adjustment to the general law. So, it saves us a statute that'll streamline the process, and it allows the taxpayers to receive the same tax credit during that revaluation year that they received the year prior. Every time our tax rate goes down due to the revaluation, because you understand when property values go up, the tax rate goes down, if we didn't adjust that, they would receive a much lower tax credit. So, this allows that process to be a little quicker and streamline that.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve. Second.
So, we have a motion to approve this first reading from Councilman De Pasquale, a second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor. Councilman De Pasquale, votes aye. Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
And Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
See you at the second reading.
Carrie, is this the second page? Are these different? Do we need to approve another one as well?
That second page is the Enabling Act, and you'll see that the ordinance tracks the language in the Enabling Act. That's basically what the state is suggesting that you do in order to effectuate this for your taxpayers.
Okay, thank you, Tony.
Thank you. Moving on, we have a public hearing. PH1, request for Class BV, beverage license and outside dining from Water Dog Inc., doing business as Water Dog Kitchen and Bar at 125 Water Street. Ms. Coelho, will you be getting our applicants on the phone now, please?
And I put the email, I actually put a little explanation of what it was, the purpose of their entertainment. The email was here, and I put in the package that we do as well.
That's fine.
Hi, this is Ryan.
Hi, Ryan. I'm putting you on speaker with the council, and they were...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hang on.
Ryan, can you hear us?
I can.
Alrighty, so, thank you for your application. Maybe you want to tell us just a little bit about the business that you would like to open on Water Street?
Thank you. And so, first, I want to thank the council and the solicitor for hearing this under the circumstances. I know that, you know, you're doing all you can, so it's much appreciated, especially as a new business coming into town. And so, you know, in that location, as you know, there has already been a restaurant functioning there. There's currently a catering license there. And so, what we're doing is looking to take over the space and just run it as a restaurant. Aside from making some cosmetic, you know, and changes to the interior, the place is going to look very similar to what it did when it was Marienda. And so, what we're looking to do is take part in, you know, Water Street's vibrant restaurant scene and add our own spin to it with the experience that we have. And, you know, from my experience so far, just attending some of the town meetings of the last few months, you know, it does sound like the board is very eager to sort of grow the town with economic development. And so, here we are, and so we're excited to be part of what Warren has to offer.
Great. Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Hecker?
Good evening, Mr. Resendiz.
Hi, I'm having a hard time.
This is Brandt Hecker. I don't know if you can hear me any clearer this way?
Yep, I'm listening intently.
Okay, great. Exciting that this space will open back up again. And I'm just wondering where your outside dining will be placed?
So, initially here, you know, I believe we, I don't know if it's the council or zoning we have to situate that stuff with, but initially, something very small, two seats or, you know, a few tables with just a couple of seats wherever they can fit without having to make any changes to the area. Down the line, as the business grows, and I don't know what that's going to mean in terms of what the new normal will be as we move forward here with, you know, after the COVID crisis, but if we can add to that and sort of add to more of that vibrancy on the outdoors, whether it be ideally like on the property itself, that's something we can look at down the line, but, you know, we've got to sort of get in, get our feet wet, figure out what the new normal will be. So, again, initially, something like two chairs, or excuse me, two tables with a couple of chairs, just to add to that sort of the energy on Water Street.
That'd be on the sidewalk in front?
Exactly.
Okay. Mr. De Sisto?
Yes.
We had previously approved two, four seats, two outdoor dining tables for a marienda.
Does that have to be reapplied, or can that be given this evening?
No, he has to reapply for that with the zoning board.
Alright.
So, that was Councilman De Pasquale, so I am asking then the BV license and outside dining, by approving that, we can say we would approve the seating as it was by marienda, but it would be contingent upon zoning, approving that same setup as well?
Yes, my recommendation is, if you approve the license, it would be granted but not issued, not only conditioned upon all of the things that he would need from the state and also local, but also specifically contingent on getting the necessary approvals from the zoning board.
Okay, and the zoning board has not yet met on this issue. We merely agreed to here at this evening so that they could have the best timing to move forward and receive those necessary permits from zoning.
That's correct. The zoning board meetings for March and April were canceled due to the current emergency.
Okay. Mr. Hanley?
Anthony, you just got me a little confused there. The zoning board approved it for a previous establishment. Zoning goes with the property. Was there a stipulation in the decision that it would cease and desist if the property changed hands? Because zoning goes with the property. When you sell, you don't sell property, you don't lose any zoning, really.
What's happened here is there's been a lapse in the use, and that's why they have to reapply.
Okay.
That's the reason.
Thank you. Councilman Hanley, do you have any further questions?
Nope.
And Councilman Kalenda?
I just have one. Hey, thanks for taking your time out. I was looking at your application. It indicates that you're going to have Divine Catering. They're still going to operate?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
You can repeat it for me, Carrie.
Mr. Resendiz, the question from Councilman Kalenda is, will Divine Catering continue to operate in tandem with you when you're doing business?
That is correct. So, the way the agreement is set up is, you know, they have, it's their building, and so they have access to the kitchen, you know, as needed based on, you know, how they schedule their own events. And so, the way they work basically is, they don't have, they don't hold on to product, and that's the advantage of catering, where they have an event, they go get what they need for it, they bring it in, they cook it, prepare it, and then it leaves the premises. And so, that'll all be scheduled, and that's part of the agreement that we have with them to allow them to continue their business while we do ours.
Very well. Thank you. Alrighty, do we have any questions from the public?
I have not, no one has indicated that they want to speak on the public line. I do just have a message here from Chief Sousa stating that the current facility has passed fire inspection as it is now. As always, you know, any license would not be issued by the clerk's office until everybody has signed off on the final inspections for everything.
Thank you. So, we will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
So, we have a motion from Councilman Kalenda, seconded by Councilman Hanley. Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, next, we will vote on PH1, and with the understanding that it is contingent upon the zoning.
I'll make a motion. We approve the BV beverage license and outside dining for Water Dog Inc., pending all state, local requirements and approval from the zoning board.
Second.
And Councilman De Pasquale has given a second. Councilman De Pasquale, for your vote?
Aye.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
And Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
So, you now have a BV license and outside dining, provided zoning does their part. Next, we will move to P4. Mr. Resendiz, you have requested a vittling license for Water Dog Inc., doing business as Water Dog Kitchen and Bar at 125 Water Street. Can I... Can I... Can we just combine P4 and P5 and make one giant motion, Mr. De Sisto?
Yes.
Okay? And we will combine this with P5, the request for a yearly entertainment license for Water Dog, doing business as Water Dog Kitchen and Bar at 125 Water Street. So, Mr. Resendiz, you've provided us with a menu, and I see that you also own another couple of establishments. So, you have the East Bay Oyster Bar in Barrington?
That's correct. I am the general manager at the East Bay Oyster Bar in Barrington, and so, basically, I'll be in charge of operations here as well.
Alrighty. So, you will continue to provide your services to the East Bay Oyster Bar? And is that... Is Pizza Co. also the East Bay Oyster Bar or are those two separate entities?
They're two separate entities owned by, you know, two separate companies. So, the one on Hope Street, while there is some... There is the same ownership, I guess, as individuals, but they've got different companies set up that basically separates everything into, you know, individual restaurants opposed to a chain or something like that.
Alrighty. And obviously, none of us know what's going to happen over the next few weeks, few months, as far as with COVID, but do you have, like, a chef and all of that, all of those staff sort of lined up?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, we've got a team of people based on, you know, the amount of experience we have and the people that, you know, the infrastructure we've already built to be able to go ahead and start this next venture. You know, we're going to be learning with everybody else here what that means for the restaurant industry moving forward, which the sad part is we know that there's not a lot of... There's some places that aren't going to be able to survive a lot of these changes, but, you know, we feel like we're pretty equipped to be able to handle them and, you know, have great staff of people who are committed to what we're doing, and I think that we're going to come out of it okay. And we feel comfortable continuously, you know, pursuing Warren as well, obviously, I suppose, otherwise we wouldn't be here. But, you know, we have the team, we have the people necessary, the infrastructure, so I think we'll be okay.
So, you'll be ready to go once it is safe to do so?
Exactly, right.
Alrighty. Any further questions?
I have a question on the entertainment license. It says light acoustics. Did you have any particular hours in mind for the music?
We really don't. I mean, full disclosure, you know, the entertainment license, you know, is relatively inexpensive to acquire. We really, if you know any of our other spaces that we work out of, we don't use any live entertainment. It's just something that you never know if somebody has the space and they make a request for, who knows, a bridal shower or something, you want to have a violinist. At least we have the opportunity to say yes to something like that as a... You know, we have zero interest in doing anything like a band or a DJ or anything like that. So, it's more about the opportunity to be flexible, but not necessarily something that we're seeking.
Because of the location on Water Street, you're surrounded by residential. And previous occupants or tenants at the... At that space have come to us for approval for music and entertainment license, and there was some initial discussion about volume and whatnot, and that all worked out just fine. So, I think that going forward, if you decide that, you know, entertainment or music being shared outside, out of doors, that will probably require some further discussion as to what's appropriate for the neighborhood.
Yeah, I fully understand, and I think, you know, our location there in Barrington at the East Bay Oyster Bar, it's in a residential neighborhood as well, and, you know, we find that the relationship with our neighbors is as important as, you know, the ones who, you know, the customers that come in and the landlord who owns the property, because really, we can't have people going to the town, to the police. It's got to keep those people happy in order for the business to, you know, be sustainable.
Yep. Any questions, further questions?
I'd just like to say thank you for that question about the music, because I know that was... Has been an issue down there, so I appreciate that, and it's been discussed and Mr. Resendiz is aware of it. Thank you. I'll make a motion, we approve P4.
Right into the microphone.
I'll make a motion, we approve P4 and P5 for the vitaling license and the yearly entertainment license for Water Dog Inc.
Second.
So, we have a motion to approve P4 and P5 from Councilman Hanley, a second from Councilman Kalenda. Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
We have an aye. Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
And Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Aye. So, unanimous approval of your business. We thank you for wanting to come to Warren, and we look forward to that day when the doors will be open.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Be safe. Alrighty, we have correspondence. There are C1 through C10. Is there anything that anybody wanted to pull out and discuss? Great, moving on. All business. So, OB1 is Discussion and Action on Extension of the Warren Declaration of Emergency. So, we... Today is the last day on the current declaration. I think it would be appropriate to extend to the next council meeting of May 12th. The governor has extended her declaration to May 8th, and the courts are going... Are not scheduled to open until the 17th, so I think that the 12th, our next regularly scheduled meeting is a good...
So moved.
...data point.
Second.
So, we have a motion from Councilman De Pasquale, a second from Councilman Hanley. All in favor? Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
Aye. Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mr. Hanley?
Aye.
And Mr. Kalenda?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have NB1, New Business. Discussion and Action Regarding Extending the Grace Period for Payment of Quarterly Property Taxes Without Penalty or Interest. So, currently, the grace period for property taxes is five days. Taxes are due on May 1, so by May 5, they should be in, given the way it is written right now. We do have the opportunity to extend that grace period. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is probably going to be for Fong or Kate. The financial impact, is it going to be severe on this? Is it going to be minor? What could we expect from this?
Is it functional? I'm in director on the line. Can anyone, everybody hear me?
We can hear you, Fong.
Hello? Okay. It's going to be minor.
Okay.
We're just losing the interest penalty revenue.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Chan, do you have a recommendation of how long you think that would be appropriate?
I think 30 days is good enough.
Thank you. Motion to extend 30 days.
Councilman... Sorry. So, Councilman De Pasquale made the motion. Councilman Kalenda for a second, to extend the grace period for payment of quarterly property taxes by 30 days. This is without penalty or interest for 30 days. So, roll call. Councilman De Pasquale? Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
And Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Motion passes. Town Manager, we have authorization to execute DEM Climate Resilience Fund Grant Application. Ms. Michaud, would you like to tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, actually, I would like to ask Mr. Ruli if he would mind explaining this.
Good evening, everyone. So, this is part of the Green Bond referendum that had been approved previously by state electors. We are submitting a request for funding to install floodgates at Jamil's Park to try to eliminate the flooding that we see on Market Street, which goes all the way back to Child Street and beyond. Being aware of the fact that we have limited resources this year, this was a proposal that originally had been engineered by Fussell O'Neil for the town in 2010, so we're not incurring any additional engineering costs, and the applications need to be in by next Monday.
Thank you. Any questions?
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion to approve. Councilman De Pasquale is second from Councilman Hanley. Votes? Councilman De Pasquale is aye. Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Ruli.
Thank you.
Next, we have Solicitor. Discussion and Action on Claim from Liberty Mutual Insurance and John L. Sampson. Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, this is a... What's known as a subrogation claim from Liberty Mutual. They paid their insureds damage to a vehicle because a limb fell from a tree, landed on the car, did about $1,500 worth of damage. That's under the trust deductible on the town's policy of $2,500. You may recall in February that the matter was referred to the Traffic Commission, and the Traffic Commission's recommendation on this claim is to deny it based upon the fact that it was an act of God. What we need to know on this one before you make a final decision is two things, whether or not the tree is a town tree, and two, what the condition of the tree was before the limb fell. That's what keys the liability on this. I noticed in the police report that the DPW person on site, Mr. Almeida, said the tree may possibly be a town tree. So, what I'm going to ask you to do tonight is to refer the matter to me for a further investigation, and we'll get back to you as soon as we can on this one. Liberty Mutual already paid the claim, so the resident has been taken care of, and I'm sure Limu Emu won't mind another month or two while we nail this thing down.
I'll make a motion to...
Mr. Kalenda, question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just... No, it's for clarity's sake, you know, so I'm reading over this, and, you know, Liberty Mutual and I believe the Body Shop, they're referring to this as a accident slash motor vehicle crash, and for clarity's sake, it is not an accident. It's not classified as an accident. It's not classified as a motor vehicle crash. The police report taken was an incident report. It's an OF. So, Tony, in continuing this, just make sure that Liberty Mutual understands that this is not a motor vehicle accident, and it's not a crash. It is an incident, and we'll make a determination on whether or not the tree belongs to us or not and what the condition is, but just be specific with them that this is not a motor vehicle accident.
That's correct. The damage here was to a parked vehicle, and it was because of a limb falling from a tree.
Thank you. That's it. That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Anthony, one other thing, what I did notice, and I just want to point it out, is the claim is for $1,500, but that doesn't include the five... If we do find we're liable, that doesn't include the $500 deductible. Would that be rolled into it as well?
Yeah, I'm sure Liberty Mutual is going to try and get a full payment on the claim, but the question is, is, you know, there's a lot at play at these things. If the tree was visibly rotted and the insured parked the car underneath there, that means that there's some contributory negligence. So, you know, to me, the first question is total amount of the claim, but secondly, condition of the tree itself and whether or not it's even a town tree, because it seems to me that there's some confusion on that issue. And those, you know, that needs to be decided. It may well be what the Traffic Commission says, it was just an act of God, something happened, it got hit by lightning or whatever, but we need to answer those questions first.
Mr. De Sisto? Mr. Ruli's on the line. He's asked if he could be here on this item?
Yes, go right ahead.
The tree is on town property. The report from the GPW director was that there was no visible evidence of the tree being rotted or in any condition that would have identified that it needed to be removed, and that is what was the basis of the Traffic Commission's decision on this, that in why we determined it was an act of God. Just looking at the tree, you wouldn't have any reason to believe that it was in a condition that was posing any kind of public safety hazard.
Excellent. Well, if that's the case, you know, and I'll send that out to Liberty Mutual, but I'd let... What I am asking the council to do now is to refer the matter to me. I'll communicate with the adjuster, and I'll let them know that, and hopefully, we won't have to have this on another meeting.
I'll make a motion where we rule the case to the Solicitor to bring back orders to the future date if necessary, Carrie.
Second.
So, we have a motion to refer to... Solicitor from Councilman Hanley, a second from Councilman Kalenda. The vote, Councilman De Pasquale?
Aye.
Councilman Hecker?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilman Hanley?
Aye.
Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous.
Motion adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Councilman De Pasquale, to whose second from Hanley. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved. So, folks, thank you very much for tuning in and your participation, and thank you to all who worked so hard to make...